Now I call this regular meeting. City Council's order on Monday, April 8th, 6:00 PM. Get a roll call, please.
More than you can.
Here.
Danny.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
You've got.
Here.
You're my phone.
Andy, you're.
Better call me, yes.
Dollar.
The first item on our agenda is approval.
Move to approve. Thank you.
Vote. I'm. And if you wonder why the mayor is voting, I'm not the mayor and the mayor votes him, does not vote, so. It was learned after long, but I'm looking to not. Two still have it on.
Yeah, hold it for.
Thank you. Got it.
Agenda approved. Our first item, next item of business is our public hearing, open public hearing. Concerning our fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Is there one, anyone here could speak on behalf of the budget? We receive any comments from. Then we'll close the public hearing. And look at resolution number 067, the 2023, 2024. A resolution adopting the 2024, 2025 annual budget with fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget transfers.
Move to approve. Second.
I was a favor. For like, no. I. So the second public hearing. Is dealing with the capital improvement plan fiscal year 2024, 2025. Is there anyone to speak on behalf of both past due? Any comments received? Then we will review resolution number 068. For the 2023, 2024, this is the resolution adopting fiscal year 2024, 2025, that we prove this.
And be heard. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I. Next on our agenda, ahead of the public hearing on Harrison Park, we do have representatives of HR Green to address the council.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Sam. I'm the project manager for the. Have a very short presentation to give a little bit of background. There you go. Okay. So just first of all, this is detailed slide, but very quickly just to explain. The program that this project is under is under the SRF sponsored project program. Whereby city take out a large loan for, for example, a way for treatment time to locally innovate it. Instead of paying back the full amount of interest on that loan, the city is able to take a portion of that interest. And apply it toward a, on what we're doing here. This project is one of four different bid packages. And I was just along here. We'll, we'll be using this case, okay, just out of curiosity. And so there are four different projects here. And the first part project, we're calling project A. And project B is a tributary. Two, the western three. Project C is what we're looking at this season, just specifically the Harry Park bid package. And then the fourth package would be the vegetation of all of those. And just to show you on the next slide, we have a map of the locations of those. So again, specifically this season, we are just looking at the main key characters of the western park. So again, Harry Park with an aerial view shot and inherited interest here. And the next slide very quickly shows the improvement. So specifically what we're doing here is we're taking a linear channel. And we're turning it into a very profanity channel. That's to allow a lot of water quality features to be in place. We'll also cook some progresses and the like, and it'll look very natural. Now have a pretty good book of that. But in summary, if I can go to the final slide here, we have the timeline. This is here on the screen there. The bid period has started and it began in March 25th. We're into open bid on April 10th. And then we pull back and it's the accountable on those bids on the. With a late start, the estimate follow over starting to pop. I have take questions.
Any questions?
Oh. What are those gains for Aaron compared by making it wind? Um, so what has happened in Iowa over a long period of time is a lot of channels that were very windy in the past. Have been stretched out and made linear. In doing so, make a lot of that storm to move through the area a lot faster, for the more erosion of the quality. So we're trying to create that URC. That allows other sediment to pour out. By the time it hit the bottom end, the water quality. In addition, with the planting that will ultimately come as part of it, it'll attract a lot of wildlife. Those are two.
Any, any further discussion? Thank you, we will close the public hearing. Looking at resolution number 059. The resolution finally approving and confirming plans including agenda one, specification, forms of contract and estimated cost. To the Harrison Park Project C. And this is a SRF sponsored project, which we reviewed in the town those times.
Move to approve. Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And that resolution is approved. Now looking at the consent agenda. For the vote.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, please vote. That approved. For the public forum, which is the time that's set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business, other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please keep your comments to five minutes at last. This is an opportunity for a notice of audience to bring the council's attention, any item not listed on the agenda. Comments are limited to those five minutes for citizens and the city will notify citizens when they are sound enough. Speakers may not yield their time to others and as a general rule, this does not make time for exchange of questions. Mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and sign up to speak. Do we have anyone wanting to speak in our public forum that has signed up? Seeing none, we'll go with. We do have planned presentations, so we will hear from Chris and I and Emily Kunti regarding a study on central elementary. So central elementary.
Good evening, council. Hi, Chris and I, I want to keep in touch here at Central. I'm like three people. And we just wanted to share with you, we'll be great, but we wanted to share with you an opportunity that we had come to us a couple of years ago. Some researchers reached out, they were looking for a couple of schools in the state of Iowa. Who are interested in participating in a research study for students and parents that were looking for assistance in behaviors where they're still there. So Emily and I were deciding this was a great opportunity for us. We partnered with Dr. Lauren Phillips, who owned and operated Central Iowa Psychological Services in East. And we were part of a two-year study. So that is coming to an end, we're done in May. We've learned a lot in those two years and we just wanted to share with you a little bit about what we've learned and moving forward. How the city and data can work with us and help with this. So PCID is parent-child interactive therapy and that's kind of the top tier of everybody that we work on. This involves parents going to therapy with their children, being coached in certain skills. We only have about five minutes, we won't get into everything, but basically it's kind of like being coached. You play with your child, there's a bug in the ear and that code that Eric is kind of coaching you on what, what you're doing well, what to say. Based on certain skills, you're trying to read mastery on certain skills. That's phase one, your child is leading the play. Then they talk you through a discipline process and put you through that and then it becomes parent-led play. And that's the second phase where you, the parent learns about back and commands. And then they, they walk you through the mouth process there, active learning if needed, but also what's the national type of. So really involved parents in this therapy. And that was kind of the top tier of our. We wanted to kind of give you that first. PCID was created for the multi-behaviorly challenging children and needs to be set up. But it is now widely used for a variety of things, ADHD, there's a selective autism, autism, how we face. And so it's used broadly now for a variety of things for the most challenging behaviors, which are very instructive for both home and school. This was the best, this is the evidence-based best treatment that, that this parent can get. So typical diagnoses that are often seen might be things like oppositional defiance disorder, under disorder. But it can treat things like ADHD, spectrum, disruptive behavior disorders, anxiety. Pretty brutal. Really quickly, the PCID process is pretty intense and so what part of what we want to share with community is what it looks like. Take, take some hesitation away from parents, from getting the help that they need. It is a process where you meet with the therapist, then you play with your child, then the, the parent learns the skills that you need to work on. Then you play with your child through four to seven sessions, practicing these skills. Then you move on to that second phase where you learn the timeout process and you learn how to give like. Appropriate demands and what to do when, when your, when your child doesn't. So very scripted, very specific way to do therapy that involves all the child and. So it's coached, therapist is kind of either behind a one-way mirror or in another room. They might be watching on a baby monitor, anything like that, the parent, I'm blocking you here, they're able to be helped. They might tell you exactly what you can say, or they might tell you like, hey, great job raising, you did a nice job there, that's going to go over there often. So kind of like a encouraging coaching situation. So the idea of PCID is that there is, you can increase attention span, their attachment, your, your parent-child relationship. You gain pro-social behaviors while you decrease non-compliance behavior, things like that. Effective when it's cited, a lot of great things to tackle from PCID and again, it's evidence-based, it's like the best treatment that you can get for behavior disorders. Okay, so what does this have to do with central elementary? Yeah, so we have. So we have partnered, like I said, with Central Iowa Psychological Services. Our school, Iowa State, and then parents are a huge part of that. Community comes into this in a way that, the, the, just that support. And the idea that asking for help is not a bad thing. We, we've kind of got, got a society here where people are embarrassed, ask for help. Social media does a really good job of letting us see everybody's perfect lives. And so helping parents understand that the reality of it is that, that it's hard being a parent. And it's also hard when so many of our parents are working and don't have time. As I always said, it's certainly time consuming process. We also are teaching our teacher something called PCID, which is teacher and someone's parent. And so we're working with our teachers in school to provide the resources in school to help with them. But part of that with the parents is, like we said, it's really time consuming. An hour a week with your child and unfortunately not. Places don't hold business hours, outside business hours. And so it's really hard for parents who are working. So just thinking about as a, maybe a business owner or as an employer, how are ways that you can help support our parents? Who might be struggling or might be wanting some of this support. And so just helping them understand and realize that. As, you know, as a. As someone who might employ these people and they come and ask for an hour off to go do therapy with their child. Or ways that you can promote that in your business or in your community. We will be at the farmer's market this summer, helping just kind of spread some news about. How, what are some little things that you can do at home with your child? Helping get a structure, schedule that at home, getting routines set. Helping parents learn how to talk with their kids and play with their kids without asking questions off the side. And so, you know, just thinking through what we can do, we want to sustain this work that we're doing. And so how can we work together as a community to do that? There's just a lot of different, I mean. So that's why the red puzzle piece isn't quite connected, that's what we're doing now. So we're presenting to the bright community agents or clubs, I guess. We're right early in the morning, eight o'clock, we've done rotary and we're trying to kind of spread the word, we're, we're hoping to gain support, buy in. This can be scary for parents as we go and we want to create this community where we, we're all aware of it and all encouraging it. And so that's probably the title here today is to ask for your help, do encourage parents who might be struggling to kind of. Push them towards like, we hope, hoping I'll do with that, there's nothing wrong with asking for help. So many slides I was keeping, just for the sake of time, just explain what we're doing at school, classroom checkups, we're working with. With teachers and family, all of them. That that we're working with parents, but really it comes down to what are some ways that you can help? Yes, so at school, we are doing PCID, we're doing classroom checkup, which is like classroom management thing. So we're doing a lot of things at school too. Unfortunately, sometimes schools get the blame for a lot of things and we're working really, really hard. And so right now, our goal is to get the community behind us, to get them on what we're doing, what's helpful, what's evidence-based. So that we can gain support and buy in from, from everybody, but mostly from parents, so that we can get parents on board with. Trying this therapy if they're needing help in that area. And so, yes, help you help, spread the word, say good things about school. We are working really hard to address some of the most behavior, or most can be perpetuated in our building, have to do with behavior. And we want to teach teachers, we have the best teachers in the state and we want to keep them. And so we think like this, we're hoping to, to do that. So say things about the school, if you don't know what's going on or you're questioning things, call us, we're happy to talk to you and share. Like Chris said earlier, if you're a business owner, or maybe you're a friend of, of another parent who is having trouble with their child's behavior. In her potential to reach out to school counselor or, or admin to their school to get, get some help. We are not here to judge or be angry at you or your child. We're here, we, we want more than anybody to get help for your kid. And so be supporters of your friends, your relatives and the school and we can all work together to get kids with them. Summer will be offering some, some, what we call. Some mini-parent session, sessions, a shorter term PCID for parents. We also, Emily and I are also part of a group with all kinds of community members, looking to help, helping me help those parents that might be struggling. With some of our organizations donating gift cards, so that we can provide those to the parents, just in a way to say thanks for working so hard. It's really, really hard work to do and more than anything, we want to be a village, it takes a village. And we know that working together with parents is our best bet for having kids be successful, but also for parents. And we just want to be that person that they feel like they can come to and they can rely on and, and work with. So just spreading the word with this, there will be many more presentations, we've kind of got different presentations depending on the group that we're working with. And so look for us and we'll be at some farmer's markets this summer as well as some social media. Documentation posts that will be coming out. Yeah, just wanted to share with you, further saying about me and Thor and so on.
Great, thank you very much. So moving on to our public forum to proclamation for National Library Week. April 7th through the 13th, I think we'll hear more from Aaron when he does his report on that. But just so that you all are aware, the best of mayor will be signing them this week, so. You are proclaiming. Old Business. Order number 1053, in order submitting the zoning map of the city of Nevada, Iowa for re-selling the property at 2005 Street. From AR, which is agricultural residential dwelling district to an R2, which is the single and two-family dwelling district. And this is our home reading, we have a motion.
Second.
And. Vote. Our second item is the wastewater treatment facility improvement phase two, phase two with contractor Williams Brothers Construction. We have two items to consider, the first one is approving the pay request for 34 in the amount of. $206,414 of 24.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carried. Our second item. In regard to the wastewater treatment facility, we'd be approving a change order with number four in the amount of $16,136,000. The motion, please. Motion, here, sir.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carried. Moving on to. Item C, approving a pay request for number 23 for the wastewater treatment facility improvement. This is phase three from Boomerang Corporation in the amount of $299,731 and $34,000. Any, any discussion on that item? Seeing none, please vote. And item D, well, that was approved. Item D, approving a change order number two for the wastewater treatment facility improvement phase four with ontrap instruction. In the amount of $235,297, $16,000. Over the mountain, or personally.
Move to approve.
Second. And now some discussion on that. Seeing none, please vote. Going on to item E, approving the five-day class B retail alcohol license. For. Do you vote?
Do you vote?
Do you vote? Oh, yeah. Thank you. It's been written like word or. The sport ball, $1625,000, hard way, effective May 8th, 2024 through May 12th of 2024. For the bags tournament in the field house on May 10th through the 11th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote. Next item. Resolution number 070. A resolution improving Nevada Main Street design guidelines to the entrance for downtown. The motion, please.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Sandy, that, this document that has been in the works for a little over a year, between Main Street Nevada and the city. It is not a binding document for property owners, it's simply a best practices, recommendation of. Changes that can be made, building that's in line with historical guidelines. Just trying to set the, the expectation and. Try to create our facade that people do work on their businesses, but maybe they might not know what appropriate. You know, historical materials are. Example would be don't use vinyl siding like you use on your couch, you do it front of your, your. How to do a brick building, so just things like that, trying to help people through that process, so for a recognition.
Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carried. Going on to resolution number 071, the resolution approving the federal aid agreement for a city highway bridge project. Program Friday. Number B R O L 5405. And that is HJ85 with the Iowa Department of Transportation and the city of Nevada.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion on that one? Seeing none, please vote. Approved, moving on to the resolution number 072, this is a resolution accepting minor subjects. The sun on Sim, Nevada, Georgia, Iowa. Seeing. The motion, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carried. Now we're going to look at approving an amendment to our master agreement with HR Green for municipal engineering services for US 30. 580th Avenue, the well water main relocation construction today, services not to exceed $140,000. The motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
I'd just like to add that this will be reimbursed to this, reimbursed back to the city after the project is completed in the D O P.
We love that. Please vote. Motion carried, item J, approve the change order number three. Motion carried. Item J approve the change order number three for the field house from H P C LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carried. Moving on to new business. Resolution number zero seven three, which is a resolution amending and approving the fee dependence to the city code. You have a motion please.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please vote. That was approved. Moving on to resolution number zero seven four, a resolution authorizing the relocation of the treat life on Sixth Street due to poor positioning. Now the construction is complete.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Please vote. Motion carried. Moving on to resolution number zero seven five, the resolution accepting minor something for Martin. Third.
Move to approve.
Discussion. Please vote. Item D approving a well field catch brand for purposes to bail pay.
Move to approve.
Question.
Good. I mean, the questions regarding that and. Wide range of uh of. Income coming off of it. Yeah, yeah, it really was. I.
You picked the right one.
Yeah. I was hoping to make you guys.
We vote, yeah?
Go.
Please vote. Hard to switch from being in the discussion thing. Seeing none. Approving the upgrade in software and hardware for the body worn camera. You're the chief, aren't you, Mr. Blue?
Yeah, um both we discovered everything in district uh and thirty-five as well. For the most part, we we wear body cameras. We have our game card cameras. Um it's kind of like they take up the community and all the forces and now that we're reporting, I feel from. Almost every incident you have. Uh about six years ago, we purchased the system we have now. Uh there's a handful of really top end of this done. One are making one of them with the bigger that the city made it from the thing. The cameras, we ended up purchasing fourteen and. Be honest, we are down four, which is about thirty percent. The um. Watch art was purchased by Motorola, Motorola and all their parts of camera we have. And they give you about five years of fire. So in terms of more like if I do can't find cameras and then we move on, he's that more with the acquisition of Motorola purchasing one guard the. The video player that we have. Broken cameras, so. Um that's in order to make everything where it still. Catcher the data and the information we have, we need to operate the video player. Which I plan on doing the next year's fiscal year and then subsequently purchase body cameras to replace that. Um with this action forum, I'm actually trying to replace all the body cameras and that video player. Uh for two different reasons. They it has some costs, so I think this line item five is a. Insult fee that they do. So every time you purchase new stuff, they're going to target the B two, help get that to the. So if I do the video system and then purchase a camera from three or four holes, I'm paying that same B three or four different times. Um and my capital is sitting in a situation that allows us to do the purchase all at once and say that we're trying to be over over again. Um keep moving Motorola. Uh. The request for today is the videos, the video player and then also the body cameras. So we did where that needs may may probably work. Um I did put that note at the end. If we. Obviously, I said there's multiple cameras uh systems that play cameras and do the video recording and all that. Um most systems are running at the video service, which is the V A F. And Motorola quote is attached with it as well. I mean, what difference do we have? Thinking the current system is physically responsible and allows us to use our own data hardware versus having to file based storage to have higher. Able to use. Trying to answer any questions or go for it.
Any questions? Thank you. We need a motion please. Who's second? Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carried. Onto reports. For the administrator.
All right, next week we will be up. We would need to leave the mayor standing and you will be headed over there. This week we have a summit that is on Thursday and Friday. And then Wednesday I will be speaking on the annual. Uh rule housing, but we'll specifically talk about several aspects, quality of life, housing. Uh different projects that we've done and then just. A large amount of different items on that list. It's a pretty fun to. Be invited to that and talk about what we've done here in Nevada. Uh been working on our railroads. Compliant quite to be compliant with the quiet zones, so that is something that is new to me. Uh in the email I received from the F R A, they told us that we haven't sent any of these documents in since two thousand eight, but. Um Brandon sent me some. Information today and it turns out we've sent it in several times since two thousand eight, so I'm glad that we we have been sending it in, but. Larry's been doing it on on our behalf the last few times, so. Um finishing that up should be completely done with that tomorrow and then get that sent off in the mail. And it doesn't need to be certified. Uh certain set certified, so we'll be working on that. Uh been discussing wastewater fees. Karen's been doing a great job working with, working on that and getting everything ready for the council to vote for uh in this council meeting, I believe. And then we also have had a trail design meeting today for nineteenth street. Quinn spoke with the senior center board, talked with them about some of the concerns that they had. There are some stuff that they like updated the facility, one being rest outdoors that need to be replaced, so. Uh we have. Reached out some companies to get estimates, unfortunately, we haven't received any of those estimates back, so we don't know how much it's going to be, but basically the whole door frame will need to be replaced. Um a lot of it's getting in there and we just don't want to have anymore since that building. Still, the building is really very. Uh at our meeting with Embark, Embark is the company that. We have been talking with updating our A B system here in the council chambers. Our council chambers still look great, but the technology is. Very very aged and doesn't work all the time as you guys probably are aware of. Uh had our pizza palooza meeting. And uh went out to our new wastewater facility, met with country landscapes and talked with them about getting a game plan on. The front three and a half acres as well as the back forty acres to see that in the native graph. That way we can start bailing that and. And really get those weeds under control so we don't have to burn it every single year, but uh so that that was interesting. And then we have our I C A P visit with um. They're probably going to be just visiting our new wastewater treatment facility as well as our field house, since those are buildings. Or facilities that we have not opened up and running and going in the past, so they will be visiting in a couple of weeks. And the last thing I wanted is to talk or discuss about was. The utility bills and creating a policy for an adjustment so uh staff can be. Aware of what step to take in the council. We necessarily have to vote on something or make that decision. On a regular basis. So I I reached out to some other communities and Steve also provided me with some information. A while back, it's probably been three or four months since he provided that and his was from Raleigh, North Carolina, and I. Seem to think that's probably one of the best ones that I have seen. And uh I just made a couple of changes to it, but basically what this would would provide is uh. Really an adjustment on the wastewater side of things. In the past, we have never done anything on the water side and we have always. Uh taken the stance that we need to recruit those dollars because we do have to clean and process the water every single time it is used, so. Uh basically, this one would help to adjust your wastewater bill. Uh with different types of issues such as your accessible leaks, which would include your water pipe, hoses, toilets, faucets, so that. Um the non-accessible leaks would be your, the ones that you cannot see or hear, which would be your underground lines, pipes within walls and water heaters. Basically, what this is is um. We would encourage the homeowner to contact a licensed professional plumber contractor at at their risk and locate the leak and get documentation for for the repair. And then to be eligible for the wastewater usage, um it needs to exceed your average by at least four times. Uh and then. If that leak is accessible to water or the waste or consumption charges will be adjusted to be double monthly average, double of the monthly average and then. Could be no adjustment to the water consumption targets. Like I said, we we do still have to clean the process. Um but that's kind of what I have right now and. Obviously, if you're filling up a pool, we have put the guidelines on when you're filling up the the pool and you would subtract that wastewater. From the pool since that is technically not going to be going down the wastewater. Uh there is also a um. Something in here about stolen water. You would just require, if you did have water that was was stolen, we would be able to adjust to wastewater, but we would require at least four to be. Five for that. Um. Yeah, that's kind of where I was heading towards that. I didn't know if that is something we're still interested in doing. We haven't seen a lot of them in the last four years since I've been here, but we have seen. At least three or four of them. Um and I know the council always kind of has a hard time in figuring out what to do and. How to do it, so I didn't know if that was something that we still were wanting to do and I could start working on that and help.
I think guidelines are always there to just lead to a lot of getting bigger and more.
Yeah, thanks for your work on it, Jordan. It's great to have somebody in place basically.
Awesome. Well, I don't have anything else. If you guys had any questions about my report and the wastewater fees, I would be more than happy to answer.
Any counsel of dudes?
Some of the leadership Nevada that's here and uh. Each year, obviously, the leadership Nevada does projects. Two of our three groups this year, including mine, are are doing things involving. Either the trail system or. The crossing building Sunday that's fourteen and I have about the summary about my group's project. Um discussing the possibility of putting lighting up along trail and here's each location. So we've got survey out right at the survey. Fly another couple of weeks, so maybe other people use the trails instead. By that. May three. Lots of good feedback so far and. They need accessibility of the trail.
Any video? Good. So. Karen.
Thank you for adopting the budget in the C I D's. Glad I asked. Well, for the year, we'll bring them in when I pass probably next. We just public hearing. On attended the municipal, I know municipal security committee as per public area for our lawn. Also required for all of you, so I see the webinar and all of those materials that are being. Over the time.
You have a question, Karen?
Any legislation I need to be worried about, Karen? I only watch it's about three close.
Um not that I heard of.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, it's good.
Erin.
I want to thank the mayor for the um proclamation for National Library Week and I brought up some. Uh handouts. Uh with some of our events we have this week to celebrate National Library Week and I wanted to just talk about the proclamation a little bit and. Um some of the things we're trying to do at Nevada Public Library. So the proclamation talks about the opportunity for everyone to connect with others and learn new skills. We recently hosted a lunch and learn. With Main Street to teach uh campus skills to uh entrepreneurs and small businesses. Um eh the proclamation mentions equitable access to information and services and acceptable and inclusive places. And this weekend, we hosted our sale with our chairlift that is now makes our basement accessible to all community members. Um. We actually have two chairlifts because of the grant we got, so there is one at the entrance to the storm shelter and one is one. At the entrance from inside the library, so people are taking books they don't can get down there and support the library and the friends of the library if people. Um in need of shelter during inclement weather can also get down. Um. Another aspect of the proclamation. It addresses that likely to play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support. And there's a lot of studies out there, but generally the return on investment. For every one dollar of tax dollars that goes into a public library, um the R O I community is typically between five and ten dollars. Um. We do a lot to try to support. Everything the community does, whether it's partnerships with groups like Main Street. Or it's providing delivery services to many of the um. Uh I guess since the living facilities in town, wintering homes and um we send. Almost, I think, two hundred fifty to three hundred eclipse classes to the schools today because their shipment was not going to arrive until ten P M tonight. Um so we're trying to constantly work with the people in our community. Um libraries or treasury institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge and we have an ongoing digitization effort. Are all of the old newspapers are digitized up to twenty nineteen hits. And we are working diligently on getting all of the data yearbooks digitized. Currently, Milford and Shipley are all done. Um we want to get the rest of the Nevada and the Fernal. And then as many of the documents that we have in the library that are um story counting or Nevada history related. We want to continue to digitize as much of that as possible. To make them accessible to people who don't necessarily live here in town anymore, but also to make sure we preserve them because. Um we are not like a legit archive of any type, so um while we try for the physical copies and we're taking as good care of them as we can. We know that they probably have a limited lifespan. And then lastly, libraries are essential for public good and fundamental institutions. In a democratic society, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy and promote the exchange of free information and ideas. We're really working on literacy constantly. We've got a thousand books before kindergarten program. To try to really focus on that early literacy before kids even start school. Our summer learning talent is always a big hit. And then we've got four really great events this week, including a read-a-thon on Friday from ten A M to six P M. We are trying to get as. We are trying to get as many people into the library to read for five minutes, twenty minutes. You want to come all day, that'd be great too, um. And we'll have snacks and we'll open my reading material and I email most of you, I think, today and. You know, um I got a lot of jokes at the city department meeting about like what council is reading and. Literally anything, if you want to listen to an audiobook that counts, if you want to read a comic book or a picture book. We're all good with that too. So.
Excited if you heard that.
Reading is reading in every minute counts and our community goal is seventy-five hundred minutes, so we really want to achieve that, so. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much, that's exciting.
Thank you.
And more. Tim?
I do not have anything unless anybody has questions.
Seeing none. Steve?
I don't have anything, Paul.
Tom?
Paul, we're.
Karen, here.
Getting a lot of more questions.
All as well, that is. On the hill, that's a journey.
I need to. Sorry.
Please vote.
I, I, I.
I. Thank you. For very.
Did great.
Great job.
Did great.